All right. Good afternoon. Welcome to the Thurston County Board of County Commissioners. Commissioners check in Monday, April fifteenth, twenty twenty four. It's two oh four P M. My name is Ty Mentor, Chair of the Board. To my left is Vice Chair Commissioner Wayne Fournier, Commissioner Carolina Mejia, and Commissioner Emily Claus. We have Commissioner Gary Edwards on Zoom. We have County Manager Ramiro Hern- ah, Ramiro, sorry, Leonard Hernandez, and Assistant County Manager Rob Gilder. And for public virtual attendance, you may follow along on the Thurston County YouTube channel. We're here till four thirty if necessary. We have no pending decision items, which we sometimes have. We just have our two standing items for Commissioners check in, the first of which is reports on external boards and commissions. So I'll turn to Commissioner Edwards. Did you have anything you wanted to report, sir?
No, sir. It's gonna be a pretty light report on my part. Thank you.
Very good. Commissioners in the room? Any board committee?
I have one.
Commissioner Claus?
Try to organize my Post-it notes. So mine are about Jazzcom.
Okay.
Um, let's see. The main thing is that we had a meeting recently regarding like what services Jazzcom provides. And I spoke with Sarah, and she was saying that they need more feedback from us on what kind of services we'd like to know about if we're considering reducing services. They want to know more information so they can put together something for us so that we know what that looks like. They said it was kind of, I don't know, it seems like it was maybe unclear like what exactly we were looking for. So they want to provide that info and get it ready before they come before us next time. One of the options they're looking at presenting to us is moving the county to a shelter only contract. And I was wondering what the cost implications that the county would face. So that was kind of the main thing that I wanted to bring back to the board is just like if we could figure out what we're asking for for them to present to us. They're interested in knowing a little bit more so they can put more information together for us. Does anyone have any thoughts on that that I could bring back now or?
Not now. I think we need to have a conversation. I had requested a conversation the last time on figuring out what way we were gonna move forward with Jazzcom. I, for my own part, have just been very frustrated with just how everything's been played out and but I wanted to see what the breakdown of what they're charging us is for, right? Like, it's really hard for us to sit here and be like, well, we're not gonna do this anymore without actually like being like, how much is the shell out of the million dollars that we're paying? How much does that go into shelter? How much does it go into time response? What is the actual services that are covered? And what is the breakdown of those prices? Because then at least at that point, the board will have the option to have that conversation if that's that's the route we're going.
I mean, I would, for me, I would want to just start with where we were before. Like, I, I don't, meaning when we had to reduce service level and that related to field. So what we didn't pay for were field calls where field calls short of a person or an animal being threatened, right? So like, we were only paying for field calls if there was like an animal or a person's, you know, safety being threatened. Any other kind of field call, oh, there's a loose dog. Oh, there's a barking dog. We're not be- we weren't paying for them. So that would be my starting point. At the time that we had that arrangement, that was about a third of that reduction amounted to about a third. Maybe a little less, maybe th- maybe twenty-five, thirty percent. I think it was, I think it was close to a third. Sarah was suggesting that that might not be a third anymore because that's not, the call profiles have changed. But that's kind of where I'd want to start. It's like, okay, so if we just go back to where we were, do we save a third? Do we save twenty percent, whatever? And then we could sort of maybe, if she doesn't want to give us a menu, which is what Commissioner Mejia is talking about, then, then I'd want to start with that. And then we could tweak the edges of that and say, well, gee, we want to save more money than that. Or we don't want to, you know, we don't want, we want field calls. So what else could we, that would be, I guess, my thought. Because I, I don't really know. I mean, I, all I have to go on is the history where we went from like six hundred and something thousand to like nine hundred and something thousand by adding the full service field response back.
Yeah.
Is Jazzcom Animal?
Yeah, Joint Animal Services.
Committee.
Yeah, so Jazz, Joint Animal Services. So it sounds like what we're looking for them to bring back is a cost breakdown that kind of shows each service and the cost of that service. And then maybe we could look at that to determine what we want to consider paying for in the future.
I mean, I kind of, I want to say yes, but I kind of feel like Sarah had some argument of why that was difficult for her to do in the way. So I'm just trying to, I don't want to ask her, I don't want to chase our tail and ask her for something she can't do.
And that's what I had a conversation with her about directly when we talked one-on-one before the last Jazzcom meeting. She was like, I think the holdup was she didn't really quite understand what we were asking for. So if I could bring that back to her, I think it was maybe just unclear. And I can't remember the details of the conversation. But that's what she expressed to me was that our ask was unclear. And so she wanted to know a little bit more about what we need from her before she comes back to us.
It'd be nice to know that like shelter, shelter is gonna cost you about half of what you're paying for. I'm just hypothetically.
Yeah.
And then here are the other things that you're paying for. And, you know, maybe that we, maybe we don't know precisely what the breakdown is. But we kind of have a sense of scale, like, okay, we're paying a million, five hundred thousands for our shelter, which we kind of need. And then, you know, then there's, there's these other things involved that could be broken down. I mean, I think it was arbitrary in a way, like back in the day when they did that MO ILA, they, they came up with this sort of breakdown of certain types of field calls. That wasn't something that Jazzcom, I mean, that was just, that was something that was just manufactured. That's why Sarah was probably being like, hey, what is it that you're?
Yeah.
Because you can be creative and say, these kind of calls, but not these kind of calls. So it's, I guess, I can understand why it would be hard for her to know what it is we might not want to pay for. But, um, but I would say if we're gonna go further than shelter versus field response, seeing what, she said she would have to run numbers to say what our old ILA would save us in today's environment.
Yeah.
And I'd for one like to see that.
Okay. Thank you. I'll bring that back to her. I think I have a meeting scheduled with her before the next Jazz meeting. So I'm gonna try to meet with her a little bit more frequently to understand what the needs are on both ends. And I'll make sure I'm reporting back to everyone here.
So the county contracts out for animal services?
No.
Every year we have a budget line, like it's our prerogative to budget for them or not. I don't think we're bound to any particular time period.
We're not.
It's kind of year to year.
And I think on their end, they're, they can terminate the contract with us as well if they needed to, right?
Is there a contract? Because you, you're asking if there was a contract. And I saw it shaking. No, there's gotta be a contract, right?
What does the county contract? So we don't run those services internally.
We don't do it internally.
There's an ILA.
We had an ILA.
We have an ILA, yeah.
Okay. Yeah, we have an ILA. Yeah, and I would like, I mean, I know there's all sorts of proposals and I may be in the minority on the board. But I, I'd like to keep things the way they are myself and just improve the.
As long as they're working.
Yeah, improve the, the wrinkles that we face. I don't really want to do anything different, but I just want to be prepared if we don't have the money. I mean, we just have to, we're, we're, we're in a super tough budget environment and we, we simply have to make cuts. I just want to kind of have that prepared. Because last year, we were kind of in that situation and it was kind of like, well, it was like taken off the table because we didn't have, like, we didn't even know, you know what I mean? Like, it was, because we didn't have this analysis, we sort of didn't have the ability to make that cut. And I feel like we need to give ourselves that choice.
Yeah.
In case we have to exercise it.
Okay.
Although I would like to not, possibly.
I, I just want to make sure we're like getting what we're paying for too, you know, like when it comes to actual enforcement of, you know, animal control issues, you know, like, are they adequately authorized to do the job and can they be? And, you know, do we want them to be or do we want to go a different route?
I don't know if it's appropriate or not, but I'd be happy to, just to learn more.
Okay.
Sit in on a meeting.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Understand the con- or to understand the relationship and, and the service that's being provided.
Okay. I can invite you to, I'll look at my calendar and invite you to one of the two or maybe both meetings with Sarah coming up. I asked to have those scheduled, so hopefully they got scheduled. But if not, I'll figure that out and send you an invite.
Okay, thank you.
Does anyone else want to be there if we meet with Sarah about this?
Leonard, Sarah.
Leonard, possibly Robin for.
Continuity.
Cont- like the context and what the conversations have taken place.
Okay.
Uh, just, just, she has a lot of that historical perspective.
Okay, perfect.
Okay, very good. Any other board and commission or supports? Trying to check my calendar.
Attended VHSO, not really much to report on that one. Attended readers or leaders. And I've just been having several internal meetings.
I had sent in guideline commission. We're just working through some really technical issues on some. When we did our re-rankings last year at the legislative request, certain offenses fell where they were like second, third degree or whatever. But they're the same ser- they fell to the same seriousness level, which doesn't really make sense. So we were just picking through those ones that needed some adjustment. And it was kind of fun, actually, because usually we didn't have, we were so rushed and it's like, we knew that we were leaving little straggly things that weren't quite tied up. And to be able to go back and actually do the fine tuning is, is actually sort of satisfying. That was on Friday. Commissioner Claus and I will be going to the climate commitment, Climate Collaborative Retreat this afternoon at four. So we'll have a report back later, maybe next week on that. I don't think I have anything else that I did that would be of general. There's a lot meeting, nothing. We're, we continue strategic planning and, you know, you will see. There are some issues we're gonna discuss later this summer that could have implication for our ILA. But there'll be time to, to address them once, once we get there. Oh, I did attend, this could be interesting. I, it was kind of a follow-up to the presentation we had from P S E. And it was a, like, one of their, I don't know their, their titles, but two of their higher-up executives were in town and wanted to meet with some local folks. And Carolyn Cox from Lacey and I were the, actually, the only ones there. But there was someone from the port invited and Olympia invited and probably Tom Water that couldn't make it. And I had to rush back to, to chair a meeting here. So I only got about forty-five minutes with them. But we had some good discussions on some of the same topics that Commissioner Edwards had brought up about the grid and what their plans are. And I asked them about how P S E's power grid plays into the larger, the regional. Because I was interested in the proposals to remove dams on the Lower Snake and how, like, how would that impact us in Thurston County somehow? And we talked about that. And then they've mentioned how right now, so in order to, to, to address Commissioner Edwards' question of like, until they reach that ability to, 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 to do this long-term, new sources of renewable energy, how are they gonna get from here to there? And they talked about how they're, they're going about contracting differently. They're looking outside, like, they said, used, used to be advantage. There's dams on both sides going up and down the Columbia. And that was where all the power was bought and sold for this whole region. But now they're, to meet their needs, they're looking more outside of that region. And like where they would have done only two-year contracts, now they're looking at five-year, they're trying to lock up cheaper power and looking outside the region. And they've got some strategies that are, they're, they're changing their strategies a little bit to try to make sure they can meet the additional needs of our growing electrical consumption, clean energy consumption. And we talked more about the CETA timelines that they've got. It was a pretty good, pretty interesting meeting. So I will report that I'm also working on the D N R lawsuit that we have on the carrot sale. I'm going to be submitting a declaration in support of that. There's a motion for partial summary judgment. It's gonna be heard in front of Judge Murphy on, at the end of April from the other side. I was asking for some, I'm trying to remember. I have, Travis is gonna send me the motion. It might be our motion, actually. Or no, they're trying to basically say that the, i- i- it's kind of a technical argument about the declaratory judgment act and whether or not we can get a declaratory judgment at all. So I think it might be from the other side. And our opposition's gonna be filed Wednesday and Travis will send that to a, it'll be argued here in a couple, a couple of weeks. And one thing that, you know, he, that, you know, that is kind of a wrinkle, even though the arguments are almost identical to what was successful in Jefferson County. Jefferson County doesn't have these repayment, trust repayment obligations that we talked about, which could be a wrinkle in, in our case. I mean, it could be, I'm sure D N R will argue that, okay, even if you were right about Jefferson and we shouldn't have cut those trees, we gotta cut these trees because we have to repay these trusts. So that's a wrinkle that the lawyers are gonna have to work around. That's a special burden on Capitol Day for us. So anyway, that's all gonna be coming up.
I, uh, I went to the, or attended the WASAC Broadband Advisory Committee. There was a lot of talk about what the various other jurisdictions are doing. Still a lot of stuff that I'm still trying to catch up on, but I, I was there. And I met with some constituents, talked about biozones. I, I was a good meeting and they had some questions that I've got to do some follow-up on. And then I just attended that, what we're, what we're calling the LTAC Regional Conversation where the LTAC chairs and staff kind of get together and look for opportunities for alignment and kind of try to pull apart some of the information and look at what different, you know, kind of stacking up what everybody's funding throughout the region. And there was a, a real good PowerPoint that I want to say one of the Lacey staff members presented that, that we'll be getting that might be good for us all to look at. And certainly for the LTAC committee to look at. That's about it. And then just some other internal meetings.
Okay. Anything, Commissioner Mejia? Nope. Okay, then we'll go to Commissioner Items. Anything's popped up that we want to discuss today?
I have one thing. Um, I've had several constituents reach out to me since the tenant protections package passed in Olympia, letting me know that during that conversation when it was passed, and I think I might have brought this up last week to the board, but some city council members were calling on the county to look into similar options. And I know there are concerns about rent control and how that's not something we can, we can do. But there are ways to potentially incentivize landlords to not raise rent, which I think is, it's kind of the premise of what Olympia did. And a lot of people are contacting me, asking if we can start looking at those options at the county level. So I've had several meetings over the last week regarding that. I don't know if it's something to bring up at a work session so we could talk about it more thoroughly or what my seatmates think on that. But it's something that continues to come up for me.
Probably, if there was board interest, it would probably need some staffing, have a planning session maybe to talk about what options the county would have legally and then practically.
Yeah, if there's board interest, we would want to take it back, talk with staff about what kind of research we'd need to do, come back with a, here's how long it's gonna take us to have a, a dis- a, a educated discussion on it.
Is there board interest? Do we want to try to think about that? I mean, it's gonna keep coming up. If there's not board interest, then, you know, then there's not board interest. But it's something that continues to come up for me and I don't see it slowing down.
So I, for, I was told that, that Re- Re- Regional Housing Council had this on its twenty twenty-four work plan. And what I was hoping myself to see is a set of recommendations that would be recommended to be applied countywide that the board could then, I mean, that, that, so that we wouldn't be lifting this up out of ourselves. I mean, we've, we've paid for staffing and we've got, we've, we, I mean, we've essentially created the Regional Housing Council to kind of work through things like this. That's where I would like to see it coming from, rather than having our staff setting aside what they're doing and putting a proposal together out of whole cloth.
Okay.
But I don't know if the Regional Housing Council is putting time to this after Olympia did its own thing.
Yeah.
Yeah, and then the, and I don't know.
Yeah, I think the last R H C meeting was like either the day of or the day before the city council meeting, so it hadn't happened yet. So maybe this is something I can bring up at the next R H C meeting.
If you could report back to us kind of what they thought, if they said, we're not doing it, you know, we, we don't have time or whatever, then I would, I would definitely consider supporting at least a workup on kind of what our options look like. I don't have any problem with that myself.
We would most likely go to them and staff anyways and, and have discussion. So starting there sounds like a good idea.
Okay, cool. I can do that. Thank you.
Thank you. Any issue?
Yep.
Could we or should we set, schedule some, some kind of briefing regarding the, the changes in the Legislative District Mapping that just took effect like a few days ago? So, so because of that Yakima Court case, there was a bunch of orders that changed.
Sounded like a little bit more as in two and a little bit less as in twenty.
Yeah, the twentieth, the border just shifted way far south. And then all, almost all of South Thurston County is now in the second.
Seemed like the, that the twentieth still had like Tenino and Grand Mound?
Nope.
No?
It lost Grand Mound last map change and it lost Tenino.
So do we have any left of twenty?
Not, not as I understand it. According to Representative Varneau, he is no longer in Thurston County. And now the second covers all of South Thurston County. And so, I don't, I mean, I don't, I don't know, do we get a, maybe an update from the auditor's office or?
That would be from the auditor, I think. So we could ask the auditor to give us a heads up.
Some kind of briefing or?
I'm sure they'll, they're gonna have to come also with something, right? Don't they have to?
Precincts.
Yeah.
That's the congressional district.
It's the legislative, state legislative districts.
Before and after.
Yeah, I have the map.
The twentieth still does reside within Thurston County.
Yeah.
The biggest difference is, um, Tenino, Bucauda, Rainier, all, all in the second rather than the thirty-fifth now? Sorry.
Twentieth.
The twentieth. Um, and the thirty-fifth really didn't adjust much down.
So what, what in Thurston County is still in the twentieth?
None of the incorporated areas.
Just some kind of random room, some warehouse or property?
Like almost no people, almost no voters.
Basically, there's a little bit of Highway ninety-nine right before the freeway. It looks.
I saw the map, but it was very hard to tell.
Yeah, I was trying to, you know, it was on my phone and I.
It looked like.
Triangle that goes, if anyone knows where like South Southern Speedway is, there's a little triangle that cuts around that.
Weird.
Yeah. And then there's like a sliver of unincorporated that's right there on what would be the north side of ninety-nine. What would be the north side of ninety-nine and then the rest is on the south side. Like the Coben Ranch falls in.
Two now. Okay, well, that's fine, I think that'd be a quick update, but just hold it here.
I have another one. Um, thank you. So, I think all of the commissioners received this letter from county staff regarding actions that we could take, um.
I have one upstairs.
Actions that we could take as commissioners, um, in response to the hiring and resignation of Officer Burbank. Did everyone receive a copy of that and have a chance to look at it?
I, I haven't read it yet.
Okay. Um, I was just wanting to bring that up as, as a board, um, to see what we all think about the action items listed here and give staff, you know. I think that this was really well-written and clearly a lot of staff care about this and so I thought we should acknowledge it and talk about it and see what we think. Were you able to review the letter?
Yeah, I did see it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, no problem.
I, I haven't had a cha- it's on my desk, I haven't had a chance to read.
Maybe we should, with Commissioner Edwards not here and Commissioner Fornair not having read it, maybe we should postpone the discussion for. Whatever, the next Wednesday, or where are we at Monday today, for a Wednesday Commissioner item?
Okay.
And then we can all look at it, I mean, I have, but I kinda like everybody to.
Okay.
Seen it and digested it before we discuss what the response might be.
Okay, that sounds good, I think it's definitely a timely matter, so if we could talk about it Wednesday and maybe come with thoughts on what we wanna do. Um, that would be good, I really wanna acknowledge this, I know a lot of work went into it, so I think it's important that we all review it. And discuss it as soon as we can.
Okay. Anything else from Commissioner Item Front? Can I measure, anything?
Nothing from my end.
Okay.
I brought up before you came on, us reviewing that kind of the resolution that. Stipulates kind of the rights and lefts of how we interact with each other and with staff and kind of expectations. And you and I talked about it a little bit, but, um. I don't know if it would be, I'm thinking maybe it would be beneficial to like, for us to know, like, what your expectations are. From us and in light of the expectations that are spelled out in that document, you, like, I, I mean.
I have gotten a copy of it, but I haven't been able to review it, so.
You know, like, I wanna know what you expect of us and make sure we're in line with, you know. Back and forth, is there, like, yeah, how can we help? Facilitate a conversation about that, is there, I mean, is that a valuable conversation, am I? Prompting something that doesn't need to be prompted, what?
Well, I, I think I'll, I'll look at that document, uh, Robin provided me a copy late last week and. Maybe I can, can chat with, uh, each commissioner just to get a little bit more background, I think our conversation was super helpful. Uh, and then, yeah, we can talk about, and, and we may be able to roll this into, I, I believe. Robin, Robin gave me an update that there's a priority setting conversation that we're, we're gonna be having coming up. And maybe we can roll that into as part of the priority setting, uh, the, if the commissioners want to, how. Do commissioners' offices and, uh, my office and in the staff, how do we all interact together if that's something that the commission wants to have?
I, I, I think so, I mean, I wanna make sure that I know how you operate and I'm not stepping on your toes and, you know, that everything, all the other. Lines are clear for everybody.
Sure, yeah, that, that, I'll give that a read and, um, be able to come back and, you know, give some thoughts about that.
I haven't seen the document, I don't know if I have a copy in my email or not, but.
We reviewed it pretty early on, but it, and I don't remember the number of the resolution, but it was basically kind of went over like. Expectations, uh, you know, as commissioners and things like that, it was like a two-page.
Okay.
It's almost misnamed, like, it's called County Manager's Resolution, but it really is about. It really came up, it included other things, but it was motivated by clarifying how board interacts with staff. To what extent does the county manager, like, when, when are we allowed to go to Josh or one of Josh's staff members?
Yeah.
I'm just using his example.
Yeah.
Versus going to Leonard and, or coming to the, or bringing it up at a Commissioner item, you know? Like, what, what types of activities are appropriate, we, you know, and just generally speaking, like, if you need a piece of information, commissioners are pretty much free to. Contact anyone.
Yeah.
But if you're asking for work to be done, then you, you should check with the county manager. The county manager feels that it's of a substantial nature, he might bring it to the board to make sure we're all okay with, you know. Commissioners shouldn't be directing like big, big prod, like, you know, going in, going to like. Staff members below directors and asking for projects to be done, analyses to be, you know, that's sort of beyond our, our role.
I, I, maybe I'm overthinking, but like, I'm thinking like, as a starting point, that's a good conversation to have with.
Yeah.
I, I.
We had it a few years ago, you guys weren't even here.
Yeah.
And then, and then it included, it was called County Manager's Resolution and it has a few other things in it that frankly. Nobody clearly, I mean, they weren't controversial, that were, but clarified some things that were just common practice. But, you know, um, the things that we, the thing that we debated are the things I just talked about, like, when should I, when should I go to Leonard and not call Jennifer Walker? You know, you know, is there something that, or not call the road man, road ops manager or the county engineer, you know?
Yeah, cause I think it speaks to, um, if, 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 as a, as individual commissioners and then as the board. If one of you is getting work initiated with the department head, uh, as, and I'm going on based on the summary, I haven't read it in detail. But, is that something that should happen or should the board? I think the answer is yes, the board should work as a body to say, we want this done, come to me and we go to work with staff and, and what's the tension between? You know, having that process to get things done, but then not being nimble and being too, um, too layered and so I, I think it would be good for me to. Give a read and also, you know, after, this is, I'm go- I'm starting my third week here. To talk also about just observations about structure and how, how the ball moves around the baseball diamond and. Um, what areas of efficiency and communication, because I, I know with the absence of a county manager for almost seven months and. Uh, Robin, who's, uh, was stepping up and doing two jobs for a while and still some players being fairly new. I've been hearing that some clarity to structure and communication would be helpful. Rob, uh, it was almost like a, um, an answer to a question he didn't know was asked, but. He comes back from the conference and with a communication, um, consultant that talks about how to communicate in his organization, that could be very timely for us to. To engage with, but I think it'd be good because our, my desire is to create an, an administration that meets the needs of this board. And how do we get ju- work done and how do we respond to your priority items, but also keep clarity and, and folks moving in a good direction so that. An organization like this that is big doesn't get, that doesn't step on itself or chase its own tail because there's too many. Uh, you know, chefs in, in the kitchen and they're confused by that, so. It might be a timely conversation, especially since, again, I'm starting my third week.
Okay, something planned?
Piggybacking on that, um, the board did have a great priority, um, retreat, you know, on the eleventh of January. Came up with a nice list of priority areas that we do need to revisit again and, and. Re-prioritize or definitely, you know, try to make sure that it's something that's doable for.
And I think that would be a great time to have both conversations, here's the priorities and then. As a county manager, talk about how do we think we get those priorities done?
That exercise was fun, but I don't know how useful. Uh, I think, I'd love to see us do a retreat like that, but something that's a little more formalized. And, you know, it should be an annual thing where, and, I mean, I've done a lot of them with Doug Ma and that's like. Who I think is the suisse du jour for that kind of thing around here, but something that's a little more formalized, something that's maybe. Like, we contract with somebody and have some specific deliverables that we know that we're gonna walk out with, cause it, that kind of thing is a. It, it is very beneficial, I think, to something like us.
Well, and you think about, it was. Six weeks or so into.
Yeah.
Uh, two of your, your terms of being on the board and so. It's all, was all new, but I.
Yeah.
I think it was good to kind of have that.
Yeah, and I don't have the benefit of being part of that last session, but I, I do agree with you, Commissioner, that those. Times are good to set the vision and the path for the year, and I think in government, uh, in my experience. In meeting this team, I think they can probably do anything, we just can't do everything. And so that's where the prioritization comes in, because then what you're doing is you're taking your, your finite resources and, and pointing them towards the, the big. Things you wanna accomplish to move the needle. And that provides a lot of clarity for the organization, because then they know the commission, the county managers are all behind these things, we can get, we can get in and really digging and start making progress. So I'll revisit that, that time with Rob and Robin and come back with some ideas about what the next steps are.
Thank you. Anything else? Okay, having come to the end of the scheduled agenda, we're adjourned.